I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She just got here.
Okay, sir, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Review and approve the minutes from March 27, 2023, regular select board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Executive session pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313A1, Green Mountain Power versus Proctor. Is there a motion to find that premature general knowledge regarding mediation with Green Mountain Power would clearly place the town at a substantial disadvantage if discussed in public?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
A motion to enter into executive session under provisions of 1 VSA Section 313A1.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are in executive session. We'll go downstairs.
I've got the orders to wear them.
You came out of executive session and there was no action to be taken. Next on the agenda is any open public comment? None? Being none, move to discussion and action items.
Could I make a public comment really quick? On the town's website, you have a page for the select board. It has a big picture of Michael. It says, "Michael, this" on the slide board. I think this should be separate. It seems like it's almost like he's the star of the page and the select board is just listed down there. There's no pictures of any of you guys. It'd be nice if the select board page featured the select board and the select board information and maybe the town manager had a different page or a smaller section in there.
Thanks.
Hey, everybody sign the bills. Review the legislative update on potential changes to local grant list control. Okay, and Lisa Wright is here, town appraiser.
Again.
Again, or still.
Yes, or still. I'll try to keep it really short. It's a piece of legislation that started in the House and it's a very, I wish I had a short summary of it and not find a current one with the changes. It's trying to do all things to correct issues with the market and whatnot and issues that certain legislators have seen as an issue with equity and assessment. To make a long story short, there are some very good recommendations in the bill that most assessors in Vermont are supporting, but the crux of the bill that we do not support is it proposes for the state to completely take over the ordering of reappraisals. And they will not only be assigning the contractors to do those townwide reappraisals, but those decisions of those contractors will be binding on both the education and the grant list. And it's a tremendous power grab. I can't really characterize it as anything short of that. It's a massive overreach and it represents a conflict of interest. So the state agency, the tax department, property valuation review, they're charged with judging the quality and equity of appraisals through the three-prong test that they do after a reappraisal. They're charged with doing the equalization study that judges the quality of appraisals in towns on an annual basis. They're also charged with appeals at the third tier of property tax appeals. So this kind of is removing a lot of checks and balances and really a case of the fox guarding the hen house, you know? It's really untenable. I don't know how listers and assessors will be citing a grant list and defending a grant list at listers' grievance that we didn't have any input and any approval of what went into it. So we will all be state bureaucrats and we'll just be doing the bidding of the state and filling out forms and keeping inventory and the powers that be will do this on our behalf.
The numbers.
I think it's part of the bill unless that's been struck in recent versions to get rid of the BCA altogether. So none of this pesky local control. We don't want any of that. And the final reason to not support it, even if you're okay with the overreach, my God, the state has not been able to accomplish any of these big projects they've set out to do on any kind of timely basis. We're working on another annual delay of the new grant list software, so we're going to partly implement it this year, which will cost you more money in my time and Karen's time and all the busy work that they're creating for that. And then we're still going to have to do more work to convert to this fully next year. The whole utility methodology that was supposed to be revamped, they're just supposed to be working on that for a while. So they're understaffed. I'm not saying that to bash PVR. Gosh forbid I get in trouble with my own sister there. They're doing the best they can. We're all understaffed and all a population that's nearing retirement age. You know, this business on the state's behalf is just going to push that many more people right over the edge to retirement. If I could afford it, I would because I'm about had it. So what I'm, the ask that I have here too for you to consider is valid. Vermont Assessors and Listers Association has a statement that we are moving on at our meeting on Wednesday as a body, as a peer group of listers and assessors, that we do not support PVR taking over reappraisal responsibility and a lot of questions we have about it. So I have a few copies of this. I maybe got one for you for the minutes and then if you guys can share a little bit with those that own those five or six dollars.
Does any-
So it's a suggestion. Some towns have, some listers have spoken with their select boards, County Rockingham and County Levee, Jarrett Johnson, and their select board has written a letter. Town Pollard agreed to do the same, to write a letter to say, "We are not in favor of this." According to BLCT, the voices were loud and clear from so many municipalities, yet it went through the House. One ten to forty was the vote. So our Rutland County folks were mostly opposing it. In fact, Wood Shaw and Patty McCoy said some, and the new representative for Castleton had some very eloquent comments about why they voted to oppose it. And who knows what the Senate will do.
So does the board have any questions or you had-
We have a question. Could you briefly explain the equity aspect of this you're talking about?
The claim, and you get so detailed, but they started with the introduction of this bill that it was because of racial bias. Their documentation of that is a little weak in my opinion. I'm not saying racial bias doesn't exist, but nowhere in the proposed bill is any solution to this problem. And then as time went on, the sponsor of this bill first was saying racial inequity. And I, in opposing this bill, made the statements that if we water this down to be a statistical basis of appraisals, a lot of the local control and boots on the ground would go away. And it'll end up being more regressive, which will happen. It will hit the lower end higher and the higher end lower. That's just what happens when you turn things from a statistical shoot for the middle average. It's the way that the math ends up working out. So I presented that it would be less equitable income-wise. And so then I hear the sponsor, the next time she's introducing the bill to the next group, saying, "And this will even have income disparity in assessment." Again, how? There's nothing in this bill. In fact, it's probably going to be the same thing with contractors that are doing it now because there isn't anybody else. The state isn't going to magically train or recruit assessors out there.
So they're going to double out and you know, by taking more from people that make more and less from them?
I just, I'll just close with, have you ever seen the state or the federal government do anything cheaper or more efficiently than your local governments?
We have a plan here for prosperity that aren't going to be taken.
All right.
Does, I don't know if anybody read the bill. It's not an easy read.
It's not.
But what my takeaways were that it was basically the state wanting to decide what our properties are valued town to town and that they would place that value. But the one thing I think I did agree with and I think others have is the fact that we do need to have assessments more often, that we waited way too long.
Absolutely. And that's right on the top of the page we ballot, we universally, everybody agrees on that. There are quite a lot of other standards we could have. One of the parts of the bill is to do away with CLA as the trigger, but to use the COD, but not to get bogged down in statistics. COD, like CLA, tends to hammer small rural towns a lot harder than big municipalities. If you've got more sales, you've got more data, you can play the numbers a lot longer.
Yeah.
And that's what's happened. The people that, the towns that haven't been doing reappraisals on a regular basis have certainly not been little towns like Proctor and Pollard or West Rutland. We did one way before we were ordered and you have done those before you've been ordered in this town. You know, the Culpatar, Rutland City and Burlington, who can do reappraisals for about half the cost of your little towns per parcel, per parcel. The economies of scale, they, uh-
So I guess if there's no questions, I guess we're looking for a motion to, I would say disapprove a provision of H.480 that moves the responsibility of the contracting for conducting property reappraisals away from municipalities into the Department of Taxes, Division of Property Valuation and Review in 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next is the Marble Museum Planning and Events.
I said, "Thanks, Lisa."
Okay, Vermont Marble Museum, Board of Directors, Discussion About Future Events.
Thank you. And for those of you that don't know me, I'm Bob Scott. I'm a new resident to have been here since 1988. You're welcome. I know that I could be a native, but you know. So I'm here in contrast to this last topic, I think with a pretty nice story. And a lot has happened at the Marble Museum and I thought that it would be good to come before the select board with an update and if you've got questions about what we're doing, I think the last time I was here was when Cydon was doing that. So that, you know, and I'm sure there's lots of people wondering what's going on. And you look at that building over there, it looks like nothing, right? So we are doing something. I'm introducing, what we're going to do is I'm going to introduce myself a little bit, very brief comments, and we're going to tag team with the other members. We've got, we've got three other members of the board here and each agreed to talk about different aspects of what we're doing. And I may steal some of the things they're going to say, of course, as I do. So I may have to, since I'm going first, I can do that. You probably all know the museum is going to be smaller and I think what you should also know is I think it'll be more in line with what people expect from museums. People like smaller museums now. And Linda probably knows this from her time there, that it's a big space and I think we can give, present a better story and a different story in a smaller space. And I have to say, the fact that design has given us a 99-year lease for a dollar tells you something about their desire to be involved in the community. I think that's a really positive thing and I think I and I, who are other members of the board, are really pleased that they have taken ownership of a building that I've told people many, many times that an empty building eventually burns down. You know, somebody gets in it, lights it, but they don't even intentionally burn it down, it just happens. So having it, you know, live business, I think is a really plus, a big plus for the community. I, my background is I worked for CBPS and I still work in the utility industry. So I'm not, I'm not the expert to be talking. We've got some people here that have some really good specific skills that we've added to the board. I will say that we've also done a pretty good job of fundraising and that's something that's been, I'm not used to going and asking people for money. So it's a challenge for all of us, but it's been successful and people have responded really, really well. So with that, I'm going to turn to Ann Cousins.
Hi, Ann Cousins. Just briefly, I want to let you know the museum's going to open in 2023. We're looking forward to this. I can't give you an exact date yet and tell you that I am aiming for mid-June, as we know, we're doing some fundraising. We're going to be meeting this week with Cydon Brokers and also Preservation Trust. And so bring our partners on board and after that, we'll get an announcement. In the meantime, we are fundraising, continuing for both staff and operations, and we have a draft job description for a museum manager, not an executive director, museum manager. So things won't change too much. We'll get the word out as soon as we have it and come back to you and ask for your help in getting the word out.
Thank you.
Get it from my phone.
Get it? I'm getting the script out of there. Kevin Scott, I'm a brand new resident. I'm also a Vermont historian and a member of the board. And I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the changes we're hoping to develop in exhibits and programs for you. As you know, as Linda knows extremely well, I'm sure, but the museum suspension started out as a company exhibit and it's essentially a sales room from the 1930s. In many ways, it still is, particularly the space that we're going to be in, 10,000 square feet on the right side. There's so much more to be told about the story of marble in the United States that Rutland County and Proctor and West Rutland specifically produced incredibly significant buildings, had large influence on art and design in the United States. And we've got experts on, now on the board who are experts in that. We have a, we have a historian from the National Park Service who's a national expert in graveyard and monuments and who's, and also great public monuments. We have an art professor who's an expert in the use of stone as an art object and decorative object in architecture. I have a, I'm working on a project, have a very strong interest in the ethnic makeup of the marble industry, particularly the two towns of Proctor and West Rutland, and the nature of the labor there. It's an untold story and it's tied to so many people in this county. And we want, we want the story of the marble industry in the museum to be the story of Rutland County, it is in so many ways. And we want to reach out to schools. Michael can tell you, he's an expert and he worked there and he's an expert in the manufacturing and we want to have exhibits on those sorts of things. We want to broaden the nature of the museum and there are so many opportunities to do it and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
I'm going to stand here if that's all right? Just hold here and I've got something for you on.
Good.
As Kevin said, that the museum is in transition right now. We are so fortunate, and I think yours is fortunate as well, that this is being preserved. The collection isn't going anywhere. We may feature different aspects of it at different times, but that's been saved by the Preservation Trust. That could have been sold off on eBay and that legacy would have been gone. We designed this graciously, offered us some space, which we're going to use. And I know it's a change, but along with the change, we view this as an opportunity to make this space and the museum better, more interactive, more originally focused. The marble industry is the history of industrial development in the state of Vermont. The grand road, hatchware, dirt, house scale, all these things wouldn't have developed had been for the dynamic of the marble industry and the fact that the marble was here. You have an important place in the history of this state and we want to emphasize that we would like to be your companions and partners in preserving the history of your town and what it means to this state as we are for. Oh, by the way, I'm Michael Fan. I should have said that. But anyway, I, I worked at the marble company from 1974 to 1978 and I was trained to be a carver. And when they shut down the line position, I went on, I became a mason and my niche market was building restoration and interior alteration in churches and the public buildings, libraries, banks, things like that. But I still, I still, I'm partly retired, but I still work part-time as a carver. I was working on the line up this morning before I came over here. So I think this is why I got dragged in into joining the group here because I have a lot of physical, practical experience in these matters and I want to, this collection means the world to me and I want to do my best to help present it as well. Oh, and the board, I have to tell you, I've been, this is my third board I've been involved with or a member of in a nonprofit organization. They're the most active group I've been involved with so far. The typical day, I'll get a dozen emails from them. I mean, I'm really working the program here and they're, I have faith now that I've gotten to know them, let's see how interactive they are. I really think they are capable of doing what they say they want to do.
Thank you.
We read and we're motivated. I've actually read twice the Proctor's Future Report from 2018. Part of the reason that this board came together is putting in a real effort to rethink what the museum is was stimulated by that report, understanding how important the museum is to Proctor. We are focusing more, as we described it to someone else, more on people, that we're becoming a people museum. The stone is beautiful and it's our background, but we want to talk about people more. And as you can see from those who are just here from the board, it comes with diverse representation. We envision how we can fit into your plans, but we'd like to sit down with you at some point. Stan before, Michael briefly I spoke with, but how can we respond to what your desires are? And in the Proctor's Future Report, there was something that I would describe as a museum after dark, a place where the community can gather and not necessarily help marble or anything else, but to have a space. And I look forward to listening and hearing from you how we can do that. And beyond this introductory meeting, I'd like you to think about how can we contribute to Proctor? That we had a great opportunity to talk to, with Lisa a little bit during your executive session. And boy, I am as fired up and as committed together as being part of this community, having the museum be part of it and figuring out how to work together for the best of everyone.
Thank you.
I think we covered everything, but okay. So last thing I'll end with is that we're having, I'll actually back out a little bit because I forgot to mention this earlier. Last year, we've uncovered three industrial films that the company commissioned, one from 1938, one from 1957, and one from 1984. The one from 1938 is still the same. On May 12th, we're going to show the one from 1984 and the soundtrack that's going to be played by the VSO along with two other pieces by the same composer. And it's going to be at the Paramount. We're really excited about it. I think it's going to be a tremendous event and I just wanted to announce that and tell you, you're invited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to close here. So I guess we've talked about a lot of things and I could talk about fundraising and try to, you know, once again, but I think what, what I really want to emphasize is, one of the reasons we're here is that we want to work with the town, whether it's the struggle of society or citizens here and so forth. And you can see that we've actually broadened the board away from the town. But, but also I hope can see we've added some really great talents and Dennis is the monument expert, which is, seemed like an odd special to me, but I mean, he's really passionate about, about monuments. And to hear him talk and I think what Michael said about the energy that's on the board, I mean, when everybody, when people talk, they have real interest in various phases of the, of the museum. I mean, my first two years, we're trying to keep the building from freezing up and the disaster happening. So that's, we've moved beyond that. So I think that's really positive, going out to the public in terms of getting donations. And I think, I hope you can see this is, we're really on a track for success for this museum and addition to the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I make one request? We're about to do a mailing and it's related to the announcement about this May 12th event. This is a big deal for us, that the Paramount bringing the VSO and, and the composer for one of these films. Future, future event for us. How can we reach everyone in town? Do you have a grant list that you shared to get everyone's address? Think about that. You don't have to tell me right now, but just know that in the next week, we'd like to reach out to everyone and invite them to visit them.
Great. Thank you.
Do you have a flyer or like an online little picture you put together?
It's supposed to be putting on our website tonight.
Okay.
It's on the Paramount.
Paramount put it on.
I'll spread it right now. I'll spread when I see a little picture.
Thank you so much.
Board have any questions? No?
Come on, little bit, you must have a question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it.
We're really excited.
We really are.
It'll be great.
Sounds great.
Be another venue for fundraising parties. Yeah.
That was a good party.
That will be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thursday.
We'll see them ahead here, huh?
Oh, bye. Nice to meet you. All right. Yeah, no, we can. All right. Anne, Anne's purse.
Was that Lisa's or Anne's?
No, I think it's Anne's.
Thank you.
Liquor license renewal for Franklin's Restaurant. Got that in your packet?
Yep.
I didn't realize the cost of permits.
Oh, I don't know what's in there.
They're pretty pricey. Well, they're all different prices, but jeez, one of them was like, what, 1,200? Is there a motion to approve Franklin's liquor license?
So moved.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motions approved. Resolution of commitment to the tri-town loop scoping study. Is there a motion to approve the project commitment form for the tri-town trail scoping study?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Beaver Pond Committee Letter of Commitment to Preserve and Protect the Property's Forested Area. Is there a motion to support the Beaver Pond Committee's request to preserve and protect the forested property that abuts Beaver Pond Parcel Number 20055?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is the Fiscal 24 Goals and Strategies kickoff. I don't know if you want to address this?
This is definitely kind of me leading the charge on this. I spoke to the planning commission about joining our meeting. The hopes is, these agendas fill up fast, so I'm doing my best to avoid the next one filling up like this one did. So April 24th, the idea is for that to be a regularly scheduled meeting, but in the format of a working session. And I've invited members of various committees throughout town to join us on that. To probably to make the meeting efficient, you've got the goals, you've been provided the goals already, so you know, take a quick look at it and just kind of come in, come in ready enough that we can roll right on.
Okay, thank you. Other business?
I try to avoid reporting things to the select board that aren't reported to them by residents themselves, but there are kind of unwritten small-town rules that require me to bring this stuff to your attention. One was that, oh, what was the first one I wrote in?
The PYL.
Oh, yeah. We've had some, we've had some hesitancy of- Oh, yeah, we've had some, we've had some hesitancy of new leadership on, on taking over a program that can be successful. I spoke with Lisa Meiser today and we plan on meeting the new P Y L leaders down there to kind of give them some kind of hope on, on how to be successful. And, and I'm even willing to kind of volunteer some time, you know, in the mornings or evenings, put some paint down because, because that seems to be the big problem right now, just finding enough volunteers to run the program. And I don't have any experience, but Lisa was a very successful leader with P Y L and I think that she can probably give, give them good feedback. And the second thing is that the rink looks outstanding. Not the rink itself, but the area around it. I can't, I mean, it gives me goosebumps to go out there and look at it, but the work that Richard Reed and Tom and Grace put into it is incredible and that was all done, you know, from them volunteer, you know, at no cost to the town. So huge thanks to them. There is concern from some residents that, that the trees, especially over the swing set, could pose a risk to, you know, people using the swings or the swings themselves. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. All of the money for tree removal has already been expended this year. There's only about $500 left there. I did, I did receive an estimate from one, from one individual that was willing to take them down. That was pretty high, higher than even what we budget for annually. So I just wanted, I wanted the board to kind of know the concerns of some of the people.
I personally would hate to see any of those beautiful pine trees cut down unless it's absolutely necessary.
We took some down already just to put the playground.
Yeah.
But it's, I mean, pine trees aren't the most stable trees.
No, and yeah, I might, I might get questioned, I might get questioned for this opinion, but I, you know, people measure risk differently. And I wouldn't have my kid on the swing set if there were a windstorm, you know, happening or something.
Right.
But yeah, I, you know, the foundations laid, the playground's there, and all we got to do is get a miracle here to set it up for us.
We'll have Lee come out and check it too, to, you know, like he always does.
Well, we have a tree warden that can take a look too.
But I mean, as far as the risk.
Oh, yeah.
We get pine trees all around the playground, the grade school we grew up. Never got hit by.
Beaver Pond, there's huge pine trees. We certainly, no plans to cut those down.
All right. Okay. No other business and is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The O and M manual updates.
Just, just a quick update because I, this is really high up on the list of things to achieve and I want to keep the board up to speed on how that's being done. Kyle and Rob and Nick and I sat down last week. I gave them a thumb drive of the O and M manual comments and we plan to meet this week to just, the goal is just to figure it all out, have a word document put together that we can send back to DeBois and King, so it's one less thing we have to worry about. And, and if that's done and submitted to the state and they approve of it, then all the contingency items of the permit will be fulfilled.
Service disconnect for broken agreements.
So the town doesn't have to send out uniform disconnect notices for account holders with agreements that have been broken. I still send out letters, they're not uniform notice letters that are required by law, but they're just kind of a heads up that we're going to come out and shut water off. A few of those have come in and made payments. It was made clear on those letters that if, if they wanted to enter into a new agreement, that they had to pay back 50% of the total rear edge. I'm getting a good bit of kickback on that, especially with the higher amounts, like for instance, there was one today that I spoke to on the phone, there's one person today that I spoke to on the phone and their rear edge totals $2,800. So to enter into a new agreement, they would have to pay back half of that, which is probably somewhere around 1,300, 1,300, 1,400. The argument there is it's a lot of money to come up with at one time, but the threat is that they could get their water shut off if they can't. I just want to make the board aware that they can appeal the decision of the credit supervisor. So you could see some appeals coming to the board and then, not in the Board of Water Commissioners in the not so distant future. And, you know, just on the face of it, some, like for instance, this $2,800 delinquent account holder said, well, I can't pay back 50% today, but I can make a deal with you to pay it all back by the end of July. And I told her, well, maybe that's, maybe that's something that the board will humor. So just again, just want to put it on your radar. You might have some appeals coming your way in regards to the decision of the credit supervisor.
So how is that going to work when they're being shut off April 11?
If they, if they submit an appeal, then they, then they.
By tomorrow?
Then they have to be, yeah, they have to have water. So it has to be reconnected. But the idea is Kyle, I didn't want to, I didn't want to say Monday was going to be the day because it's the day after Easter and guys have their families in and who knows what they were up to, you know? So Monday, come in, get geared up for the week and then Tuesday, start making disconnects. So.
Good. Well, if they broke an agreement once, I don't have a lot of faith that they would, you know, uphold a second agreement. Good.
All right. Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewer Commissioners? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Emergency power backup plan funding approval.
And in accordance with the 2023 discharge permit, the town must update our emergency power outage plan. It was last revised in 2011 by A and E. Enclosing your packets is scheduled to pending events for the water treatment plant because I really don't like costs like this popping up out of nowhere. I've asked for budget guidance from the state and they've actually provided that to me. I received it today. But I guess the higher level activities that need to be on our radar is this one that we're talking about now, the emergency power failure plan. A and E capped the agreement at $4,200. I looked at the old emergency plan and was surprised by that number. And they said realistically, it'll probably, probably be lower, around 3,000, but they just wanted to be conservative with the number. They actually came below the agreement we had on the monitoring for the water treatment plant as well. So, so they have a reputation for landing below the, the actual agreement number. The next one is the operation management and emergency response plan, which is due in June. I asked A and E if they would just combine these two agreements and they said they wouldn't because the operation management emergency response plan is actually fairly large. They said that they did one a few months ago for a bigger system than ours and it was, it was estimated around $15,000. So that's why I'm thinking it'll be around eight and 10 for us. But we, but the town does have a healthy wastewater reserve fund that this money can be allocated to. And what I'm going to be looking for is a motion from the board to approve the emergency power failure plan agreement with A and E.
So is there a motion to approve the agreement with Aldrich and Elliott to draft an emergency power backup plan for the $4,200?
Somewhat. I don't think we've got any choice and it's a, it's something that we really need.
I look at everything, I look at everything too, to determine whether it can be done in-house or out of house and there is a good bit of engineering in those plans.
Can you explain the scope of the second plan versus the emergency power plan? What's the second plan, the scope of the second plan? Does that need to be an emergency or what's that mean?
God, I'm not sure to be honest with you. But doesn't make it any less of a requirement.
How often is that required, do you know?
I think they were both updated around the same time.
It's a long time.
Well, yeah. And the discharge permits are usually five years.
Okay, so.
I think we have a.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Treatment plant upgrades study progress meeting scheduled.
A 60% review meeting is scheduled for the treatment plant upgrades will be held here at 9:00 AM on April 20th. I do suggest one or two members of the sewer commissioner join.
What's that date again?
That is April 20th at 9:00 AM.
What day is that of the week? That's right, I'll look it up. Doesn't matter.
And we're going to have.
I think it's a Thursday.
Yeah, it is.
The idea is to have a representative from Vermont Rural Water there and there will be a state representative there as well.
Will A and E be here?
They will.
Lagoon level equalization pipe inspection and repair.
So I left out of here Thursday with pretty bad news about the pipe. I've been bringing, I've been bringing up this pipe here in the meetings for the last couple weeks, months. A and E did a back of envelope equation on, on whether that eight inch was, had enough capacity to exchange flow rates between the two lagoons to equalize the height. And on paper, it showed that that eight inch pipe should be enough. And so the next conclusion that we drew was maybe something's blocking the pipe. I want to give a lot of credit here to Rob and Nick and Kyle. They're not afraid to reach out for help and in this instance, it's what they did. We met first and of course, the biggest fear is that we have to hire divers and we wanted to explore every option before we did that. So we called Aldrich and Elliott. We located a bypass valve and they suggested to crank it open as hard as you, as you could and maybe it would apply enough force into that eight inch and open up the blockage. And luckily it did. We won't go into detail about it. And so, so Friday, before I left out here, I went down to the plant and, and Nick said not only could you see it in the numbers, but you could see it physically in the plant that the water levels were equalizing. So again, nothing there. I did, it just, we got some really motivated crew members that wanted, that appeared to want to do a good job.
That's awesome.
Yes, so we'll make that part of a routine down there, exercising that valve once in a while.
We know, we know that especially because, you know, that sludge might be, gets so thick, you know, it might get blocked again. So we're just keeping, yeah, yeah. So, so we're keep, we're keeping an eye on it. You know, it's, it's 12 feet deep. And.
Not something you want to dive in.
Not something you even want to hold your breath for. Yeah, and, and A and E did tell us that, that whole pipe wasn't replaced when it was repaired somewhat years ago. So it may still fall within the scope of the project in 2024.
Good, excellent. Tell the guys, thank you. We appreciate it.
Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewer Commissioners and back to the regular select board meeting?
Somewhat.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alan Manager's report.
Mr. Manager, Chair. This is, there's no update from the last meeting, but just to keep the board up to speed, there are two policies in the queue for legal view right now, the personal policy and the collection policy. I'm hoping to have, I'm hoping to have one of, one of those prepared, ready for a motion to approve at the first meeting in May because I can't, trying not to build up stuff for the April 24th meeting. The tool cat sold for around $27,000.
Amazing. Will that money go into the highway departments?
Right back into the reserve fund.
Okay, doesn't go into their equipment replacement fund?
Yeah, which is, which is a dedicated fund, so it'll just go right back into that.
Good.
And we, the guy hasn't rushed down here to pick it up yet. He's, the purchaser's from Quebec, so we're thinking he's probably trying to figure out the logistics of, who knows, yeah, maybe customs.
It is check cash.
It does. And actually, actually, no matter what happens, it's, it's whether he picks it up or not, it's, it's been paid for, so.
Excellent.
The check is probably from the auction company, isn't it?
Yes. So I actually spoke to the auctioneer today. The town should be receiving a check here by, by the end of the week and we'll, we'll get the tool cat ready for delivery.
That's a good suggestion to do it on the online auction.
You know, I, that was actually from a meeting or training I went to, so that networking does come in handy one time. We were trying to figure out how to unload some equipment and I was talking to other town managers on what they did and they said they've been really successful with this company, so they have been great to work with. The Planning Commission has authorized me to draft a grant application to advertise and promote energy resiliency in town through the state's municipal energy resilient program. The acronym for that is M E R P, M E R P. You got, everybody's going to hear a lot about M E R P here the next year or so. There are three phases of it. The first phase is the capacity building grant, which is $4,000. The second phase of it is an energy audit that will be performed by somebody from the state. And then the third will be $500,000 of grant money for towns who did receive that energy audit to, to make the upgrades. This first phase, this capacity building grant, isn't really a requirement. I'd be surprised how many towns participate in it. The Planning Commission has allowed me to kind of become creative with it and I think what we're going to do is I'm going to submit an application, beaver seemed to be the hot topic right now, but I was going to do like a little stuffed animal with a T-shirt on, like that big around, we can hand it out at Fall Festival, be energy resilient on the back of the T-shirt. And it received the name Boltie the Beaver at the Planning Commission meeting. And so, so that's the idea. I won't submit that application. I've actually got, it's pretty funny sending emails out asking for that type of item. I've got, I've actually, you know, Quick Print said, we'll get you a quote here in, you know, a few days. So I should have something soon and before I submit that application, I'll make sure to run it past the board. And, hold on, what was down here? Transfer Station Day, tickets are available downstairs. We've already had about 20 people sign up. Carpenter and Costin is, is totally okay with us using the facility on May 6th. And information for what you can and cannot drop off is available online and for pickup when you come and get your ticket. Letters have been sent out to the homes that were destroyed by fires this winter, instructions on cleanup. And then the Corey property along North Street also received a letter just addressing the development and improvement activities happening there.
What do you plan on?
Corey property?
No, the homes that.
Fires. The Mace property probably needs to be expedited. They're probably well beyond that 90 days if the bylaws grant them to, to have the wreckage there. And then. And then, uh, the next one, I, I, I'm only kind of going off feel. I haven't checked on what the date of the fire was, but I imagine East Street is coming in soon, and, and I will say, the East Street home is the one that I get the most phone calls on.
It's very, yeah.
So, uh, so we're, I, I'm sure we're closely approaching that ninety-day mark, and, uh, and, and I'm sure that whatever we have to do for enforcement, I won't have the authority to push out, so as soon as we're ready, I'll come to the board with a, and we can form some, some type of plan for clearing the lot. Well, the zoning administrator might have the authority to do it. Anyway, we're gonna take care of it.
Is that something that's just going to be put on a lien for that? If the town brings up the property, how does it work?
Yeah, it's, it, well, and, and that's kind of where I was getting at, it's probably not going to be an easy process. If the town does have to, if the town does have to take action to remediate the property, it, it's, it's something we're going to have to approach delicately.
Has a water been shut off on East Street by our crews?
To the homes? I imagine it would have to, but I can check on it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, other than the fact that, uh, we've got, well, I have more exciting things to talk about with parks and rec. You know, we, we've got some liner to try out to contain some of the weeds for the pool this year. They showed up today. And, uh, oh, and we've got the school signed up to do cleanup on May fifth up there. That's going to be really helpful. They're going to stain the benches, and they're going to help us put the new slide up, et cetera. And I've spoken to, just, it, just by happen chance, I, I spoke to a design professor at Castleton, and, uh, some of his students are willing to, to put some designs together for, um.
Murals?
No, not murals. What are they called? Not flags, banners. So I think most of the banners, if, if, if we were to decide to do it, would just be like the Procter symbol, but then I thought if the design students wanted to come up with a few other ideas to present to the Planning Commission, uh, like, you know, I was thinking of design, a sleek design of the Marble Bridge, or the Falls, or something like that, we could put around. And, um, the, the professor said it'd be a good project for the students, and so, you know, nothing to get too excited about, but. And, uh. Was that, we do beavers? That's, that's Bulte's brother, Bucky. Yeah. And, um, and then we've got an April workflow for the Highway Department, uh, and just gearing up for summer, putting projects together. So thank, that concludes my manager's report.
Thank you.
We were going to talk to Kyle about paving which streets this year?
We are planning after our, Wednesday's going to be full-on DPW, so Wednesday, after we're done doing our O and M manual edits, he and I are going to ride around, and we're going to locate areas that need to be paved this year. One, we are for sure, depending on whether we get the Class Highway Two grant. If we get the Class Two Highway grant, everything goes to West Street. If we don't, then it could be broken up, but, but we do know for sure that the, uh, the hill going down Pleasant Street will get milled and paved, because they can't even, the plows can't even get to it anymore, because it's, uh, it's, uh, locked up so bad along the side.
Actually, Main Street's really bad, like up here, right before the five-way, that little stretch down to the big marble building.
I, I thought we were going to finish paving North Street.
To... To the intersection of Pleasant or more back this way?
This way.
It's bad this way, too.
It's really bad.
Yeah, it is. A lot of streets, not enough money.
Yeah, you're right, because I was actually coming around, it, I was coming around Beaver Pond right there near the entrance. It's pretty bad right there. And, and then a, a good bit of pavement got ripped up along Florence, and that's probably going to land pretty high on criteria.
Generally, we, once we have done a water sewer project, Park Street, Chatterton Park, we let it settle for a year and grind and pave it the next year.
That's been a few years. Too long there, but when did, do you have any indication from the district when that Class Two will be allocated, or?
It's got to be coming up pretty quick.
Yeah, you know.
It, it should be, yeah.
Yeah, and, and actually kind of looking, thinking about our, our goal sheet, one of them, one of the goals is to establish some kind of improvement plan for highways so that, you know, so we really can avoid these conversations. We can, we just know year after year what we're going to hit. Not that I don't think the work happened, but the plan is always kind of nice to have. And, uh, yeah, so I think maybe the best path for it is, once Kyle and I do our ride around next week, I'll just give the board an idea where he thinks the worst spots are. You guys can give me an idea where you think the worst spots are, and we can, we can land on what our total area can be for paving. We, we, we know it'll probably be about half a mile.
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah, we should be in line to get that. We've been overlooked for two or three years now, so.
I, I was, last year I was led to believe that, that we were two years behind, so I, I would be pretty surprised if we got it this year, and I would expect next year, but hopefully I'm wrong. Thank you.
Sheriff's report. Any questions or comments? Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.